Today's lesson is going to be the head. So, let's start with the actual construction of the head and let's start breaking down the sections in the way that I like to do it. So that you guys understand um this a little bit easier in the way that I do it. And then I'll explain it in different ways so you guys can actually visualize it differently. So normally with faces, you guys can see perfectly clear, okay. I have learned that faces are a lot easier to draw lately if I draw them from a cylinder. I know that's super silly. It's a really weird shape that we don't normally associate with drawing heads, but I like it because it gives you the width of the actual head. And it gives you the width and an average neck. So being able to draw the head and the neck as a standard is very, very easy to do as a cylinder. Now, whenever if you don't choose to do a cylinder, you can still do this just as easy by drawing your normal basic shape of your head with the Loomis method. So it's just a matter of finding the shape that you're comfortable with. And then learning how to map out the little sections like the neck and stuff, which is relatively easy once you learn how to find your ears. But we'll talk about that in a second. So, once you have your initial shape for your head being the Loomis method, a cylinder, or a box, or any other way that you guys want to draw your heads. Right? As long as you have that middle section, it's going to be very easy for us to find the different features by drawing a simple shape of a triangle. Now, this triangle has to be a specific size and a specific angle. If you're going to be drawing somebody with a wide, like a normal nose would be a normal little triangle. Okay, the middle section right here, the top section of your eyes, oh no. The top section of that triangle is going to determine the middle section of your eyes. So wherever that little triangle ends up at the top is going to be an indicator as to where your eyes go. You can draw your eyeballs like a little barbell that connects on in the middle. This width that you draw with this little barbell is going to be the flat section of the nose bridge. So whenever you guys are drawing your noses, you'll have this little landmark to give you either a flat section of your nose bridge, so you can draw your noses a little bit easier. And it's also going to give you. Let me get our teammate Corey in here. So Corey is one of my apprentices that I have been helping out over the last couple, like a year or so. So he will be of great use for you guys as well. So, okay, so now that we know roughly what these little mapping points are, what does that triangle do for us? Well, that triangle is going to be the nose canal. In your actual skeleton, you're going to have features like your eye socket. And you're going to have your color, your cheekbone, and all those features that are normally really hard to find. Like actually breaking those down is normally a task and a half. And it's normally really annoying to have to guess where all those features go. Right? So what we're going to do is we're going to simplify all this in a very simple concept of just a triangle. The triangle is going to give us the guidelines by following this as a guideline right here. We're gonna get our eyebrows. We're gonna get the spacing for our teeth. And it's gonna drag all the way down to where our chin is in the form of a teardrop. So if you do a teardrop from there, you're going to have a general spacing for your mouth and your chin. From there, it's all about detail work. Now, let's leave these here and let's actually start something from scratch a little bit later. So in this case, we drew a cylinder, we drew a midline, drew a triangle, and followed those guidelines to come up with this sort of shape. You end up with this little like infinity sign, not quite radioactive sign type of thing. And it gives you all the mapping points you need. This area gives you your nose. This area gives you the spacing for your mouth. Right here, you have all this to play with to draw your eyes, but you have to guess where the eyes are gonna go because they would go at the top of that little triangle. So that little triangle is gonna tell you where the eyeball goes and you can decide what type of eyelids you draw to give it the styling that you want. So as you progress, you're going to have all these extra landmarks. Now, the edges of this connected to your chin start giving you the definition for the front of your face. Start giving you those muscles or little triangles that are so annoyingly defined. And then from there, you just have to draw your ear and come up with your jaw. And this can be really wide. This could be really small. This could be modified to fit anything that you really require for your character. So if a character is gonna be having like a really small jaw, you wouldn't draw that very big. You would just kind of hug your body and you would get more of a delicate looking frame that you can use for women characters or characters that just have a more delicate look. Now, up until this point, does anything have a concern to you guys? Do any of you guys find? With any concept so far, is it not anything that's not clear, anything that would needs to be clarified? Please, please, please. Anybody know it?
For me, at that last part, you kind of broke up with the other guy.
Okay, okay. So I'm just asking if there's anything within this structure so far that is confusing for you guys so that I can clarify a little bit. So essentially, we have.
How about like a fatter face?
A fatter face, okay, cool. So let's say that we have a really fat face. We want somebody really wide. So these features, the triangle, depending on what you want to do, you can always just draw it in the middle as well. You can have a white base with a triangle on the side, so we can have like a three quarter. And then if you want to make the character look really, you gotta make the features look small. So when you follow your guidelines, just make them a little bit smaller. Add your features like your ears on the side and you're going to start getting a really massive dude. Like the kingpin or you know, somebody that's just incredibly large.
So basically, the smaller, the bigger the person that.
And then when you start getting your necks. So the volume plays a large role in it. So if the features are small, the volume is gonna look a lot bigger. So if you draw really small features on a face, let's draw. The volume of the head is gonna look a lot bigger, but if you draw really big features inside, the face tends to look smaller. So it's just like, it's just a balance of shapes. So that comes down to shape theory. So if you have really big features, let's draw the same guy, but let's draw the really big features instead of really small.
Hey Rod, can you shift your camera just a little bit to the left?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Sorry about that. So if you draw big features, you're going to get a different proportion for your character. So it doesn't, and ends up looking a little bit less bulky, still pretty bulky for a character, but it's ends up looking a little bit less of a massive character than the other guy, just because he has a bigger features which take away the mass around them. So for example, the trick with kids is to draw the features really big, but drawing them on the bottom of the face. So when drawing kid, you gotta make sure that the forehead is really, really large and you draw all your features really large, but on the bottom of your drawing. And you end up with more kid-like features. The bigger the forehead and the bigger the eyes, the younger the character is gonna look. And then you can use that for like your little pigtail girls for like books and stuff. So besides from the big, a bigger dude, is there any other questions that you guys would like to get clarified up to this stage so far before we more like move into the nose and the eyes? So just learning the actual basic structure of the triangle. And what it actually like measures is step one. So lines on face and what is very important, nose canal. The teardrop on the bottom is gonna be spacing for your chin and for your actual mouth. There you go. You're gonna end up with a triangle that's gonna give you your nose canal. An eye socket, a cheekbone, and your chin. All these mapping points are going to just be nice and standard. And you can change the sizing of them to be able to match different styles. So like I said, up until this point, is there anything else before we move on to more detail work besides just mapping out the faces?
Heck yeah.
Yeah, pretty good.
I do have a question.
Okay, okay, okay. So let's move on. Do you have a question?
Yeah, so uh I, you know, I love this, this, the way you figured this all out. First of all, thank, let me say thank you for that. But second, when you're drawing, say you're drawing an expression, especially with the eyebrows and everything, can you just show that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you wanted to draw a different expression, all you have to do is when you have that triangle, just change the size of the shape inside of them. You're still following the guidelines. You're just changing the size now since you already know where the standard says is supposed to go. Now you can modify these to be any size you want. You can move these around to cause different facial expressions, different looks, different styles. And it's all going to be a little bit more accurate because now you know where the things are supposed to fall and how they connect to each other. So that would be how you would create expressions with these things. You would find the standard, right? You find your standard shape. It's nice and easy to follow and then you change the size of it to fit whatever different styling you need to create. And that is how you would go about creating different facial expressions with these sorts of shapes. Once you understand the very basic standard form of it, it's very easy to adjust these to just change them in size to just develop the actual look you need. Without breaking that same conditions that meet that criteria to help you map out the rest of your face. So that is how you would apply facial expressions to this sort of system. And this also works really nicely for profiles. Because profiles are essentially that. And then this little teardrop can be moved forward and backwards depending on what you need for the character. So it gives you an extra measure of of modification. So once you have that little triangle, you can have that little triangle pointing back to create a a normal jaw, or you can create it going forward to create a person with bigger mouth and lips. And then you can just move that around to create very different characters and see where your imagination leads you. But it's all going to be based more on a more accurate system of drawing the face and maybe hopefully with a little bit more understanding, knowing that all these lines give you a lot more of your net. So, any other questions, guys? Mr. Wimbish, I hope that this is making sense. I see you rubbing your head a little bit, so I'm like, I want to make sure that you are that everything is making sense and everything's good so far. Alright, so if you guys are comfortable with up to this point, while I explain the other aspects of the face and how we find the eyebrows and how we start drawing the actual features, I want you guys to do a couple of practice drawings of these in your actual sketchbooks. I want you guys to just practice drawing basic shapes and then drawing faces inside of them with triangle. So just practice by start with like a basic sphere, drawing a triangle, and then following those guidelines to create the little mapping points for your eyes. And then I would just want you to do that maybe a good 10 times. While I explain the next part of it, which is going to be how to actually use these mapping features to start drawing your features like your eyebrows and your nose. Yay. Let's see that. This camera thing is weird because it's like mirrored, so I gotta make sure that I'm like moving the camera in the right place. Anyways, so let's go on to the next stage. So once we understand the whole concept of the triangle going up, going around to create our cheekbones and our mouth shapes, now we get to have fun with eyebrows and the nose. Let's work our way down from the top. So this little triangle that happens in the middle is going to be the space in between your eyebrows. This is going to give you a nice little measurement from your eyebrows to your temples. Your temples are going to start, or the side of your face is going to start at the edge of your eyebrows. So wherever your eyebrows end up, that is normally where the side of your face goes. And that's when you start seeing flatness and the change between flat and round. So that's when you start seeing the change in demeanor in like the complication of the shapes. Right? So if you understand that that's another mapping point, that's gonna help us out later on because every single time we see a face, we'll know that at the edge of our eyebrows, that is the side of our face. So now we know that it has to have a little bit of width. And you can start drawing or drawings a little bit more consistent from that point. So we find our head, we find our shape, we find our eyebrows by drawing our lines and we just follow those guidelines up until the edge of it and that creates our temple. Cool. So now we have the eyebrows and we have the temple, so we have the side of the face. We draw the outside of the face. That's what you would look like. The base of your nose and the baseline of your actual eyebrows is going to give you where your ears go. Then from here, from the bottom of your ears to your chin, that is how your jaw goes. You can start off by just drawing a nice little connected line, but just realize that in a three-quarter view, when you draw these things, you're gonna have your ear, your chin, it's gonna go from your ear to your chin, but then it's gonna curve around and go to your other ear. So you're not gonna see your jaw over on this side. This side is your cheekbone, cheekbone into your chin. And then this side is. So let me clean that up. So if you have your head and you find your ears by drawing through your shape, which you can do by drawing circles or you just learn how to subdivide your shape so you can find two points. That is going to be step one to learning how to master the jaw. Once you find your ears, find your midline for your face and find a chin. Connect this side to your chin. And then this other side is gonna wrap around because your shape is going around and going back the other way. So this side sees the jaw and then the other side sees the cheekbone and the eyebrow line. That's how those features work on the side. So how do we map this out? How do we find the distance between the side of our face and this? So let's talk a little bit about proportions. Let's talk a little bit about the actual proportions of the face. So if we are drawing a face and we are drawing an average face from like a superhero or just a comic book or just a portrait. We are going to take our actual shape, which should be a little front view. We're gonna take our face. We're going to make it a little taller than it is wide in our frontal face is actually very quite rectangular. It's not necessarily an oval, except for the top part of our head. Maybe the bottom's a little bit pointy, but it's mostly like a box. And if you divide that box into three. That little section is going to be where all your features go. So your little triangle is gonna end up there and then you can use those guidelines to find the proportions of everything. So finding the thirds will combining it with the triangle will give you all the perfect proportions that are gonna be nice and standard for your drawings. Your ears all in that space. Your nose is gonna be coming out of that little base triangle. And we can start moving on to the actual features once we understand that there's not much space in between from a front view. There's not a lot of space between your cheekbone and the side of your face. Your cheekbone is kinda going to map out the side of your face, so you're going to end up with a situation with just a little bit of the side view. And you're going to get a lot of the front view for that. So let's, okay, anyways, up until now, I'm going to ask this quite a bit, so I hope you guys don't get annoyed. But is everything making sense up until now? If I can just get a yes, Rod, then we can continue on to the next step.
Yes. I have one little question.
Yeah, what's the question?
So you know how like the proportions are like equal? Do they always have to be equal or can like one proportion just be long in the breast?
Okay, so if you are going to be trying to do different proportions for different parts of the face, you gotta remember that every single time that you modify one of these things, let's say you want to make one of these smaller and one of these bigger, right? So if you want to do that, it's perfectly fine because that's how you normally change expressions, but you need to remember that that's going to modify the look of your design. It's going to mean that you have to open up one eye more than the other because one's getting closed, one's being more open. So you have to take all those little things into consideration so that it makes sense at the overall end of it. So when you're exaggerating for like caricatures or you're exaggerating for something like a character doing something specific with their face, it's very easy to just modify it once you understand how it works and it's also gonna keep your characters a little bit more consistent. It's not gonna look like a different character every time. It's just gonna look like the character, but with slightly modified features. Like I can move the eyebrow down, I can move the eyebrow down, I can move the eyelids up. You know, I can just do all those things really easy by just changing very miniscule aspects of it, but yeah, they don't have to stay completely even. But it helps to keep them consistently close to each other so that it doesn't look like it's distorted or a mistake. So you keep it nice and, you don't have to keep it always the same, but keeping it relatively close to each other is going to be beneficial for you.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Like so if a drastic change, you might see like it looking like a stylized. So as long as it's controlled and you understand what you're doing when you change the size of it, then that's perfectly okay. Just remember to connect your puzzle keys to the right places and you're gonna end up getting the ability to draw a ton of different characters. Like you will just magically start drawing like a ton of different characters because you can, because you're not subject to drawing the same base syndrome anymore if you don't want to. All you gotta do is change one of the shapes and then you have completely different face. Which is also a drawback because if you aren't consistent with your shapes, obviously it's not going to be very effective and it's gonna be very easy to throw it off as well. So you gotta keep that in mind as well, you know, like with it having like nice ability to change with very slight changes also comes with the ability to mess it up really easy by changing things in the wrong way. Alright, so any other questions up until this point? I think that we are progressing quite nicely. If there's anything that you guys have questions with, by the way, after this, right? After this session, if you guys have any questions about this topic and you guys feel like messaging me and sending me images and sending me what you guys want to get reviewed, that is what you guys get for joining my lesson today. So if you guys want to send me stuff to review, I will gladly do that for you guys because you guys were willing to be a participants in this initial like launching of this stuff. So I know that I had a couple sessions with On The Fritz before, but it was just one-on-one because nobody else joined in. So it was just really, really fun and thank you for being patient with this technical issues that I was having at the beginning too. It's the first time that I do a multiple person meetup. But anyways, are we good up until this point? And then we can progress to the next section, which will be eyes. We will talk a little bit about the eyes and how to learn to draw the eyes in every single way.
Yes, all good.
Pretty good.
Great, sir.
Alright, Mr. Robert Delaney.
Perfect.
Mr. Whitlock, we good? And Mr. Corey. You did. Awesome. Alright, so let's move to the eyes. The next most critical part of the actual drawing phase of characters. So you're gonna be surprised at how easy eyes are to draw. Because eyes are incredibly easy to draw. Eyes are essentially what you get from being able in learning how to overlap your lines. Learning how to overlap your lines and creating a spherical shape for your eyes actually quite simple. It could be really boiled down to literally just drawing two dots and two curvy lines with the top one overlapping the other. This gives you nine nice little almond shape that normally people do and when you thicken the top line a little bit, you end up getting a semblance of eyelids or eyelashes. The inside of the eye can be any way you want. And you have yourself an actual eye. Different types of eyes just consist of drawing that little curvy line in different directions. And you get more stylized eyes. You can get even squareish eyes if you just take that curve and make it into more of a box. And you end up with eyes that are not even necessarily round, but they still have that like depth to them. So anime eyes are big. They love this. Okay, so understanding this concept also comes with understanding how to connect two points on a sphere. So if you want to get best at this, learn how to subdivide a sphere, draw a circle inside, come up with two points, draw another circle inside that intersects it. And you're going to have the ability to use perspective to figure out how to draw eyes in every shape. In every perspective. So exercises that help you understand this a little bit easier are as follows. One, draw a circle, draw a circle inside of it. Follow this guideline and draw the middle of your eye going around your eyeball from the front and the back. Okay, so this is an exercise that teaches you if you actually understand how to Okay, so this is an exercise that teaches you if you actually understand how to rotate something around the sphere. It's not as easy as people may like if I make it sound. You can also do this with facial features to see if you know how to rotate a face up or down. Right? You can just do simple happy faces and like see what angles are hard for you to map out. So exercises like these, the simple little tiny exercises help you understand how to draw the eye looking in different directions. And then when you find out how to do that. What I do is figure out one point here. One point over here and connect it with a curvy line that overlaps the top. And just like that, you have eyeballs. And it's actually quite easy to apply that to an actual drawing. So let's have a face. Draw our triangle, start applying all the concepts that we've been talking about. That's my thirds, my ear. If I have my barbell at the top of my triangle into my eyeball, now I have my spherical shape for my eye. I can draw the design inside in any way that I feel like drawing it. And then this is a sphere, so I'll choose one point here, one point in the front, one in the back, and then just draw a curvy line. And another curvy line. And just like that, you have your eyes. Your nose is going to block a little bit of one of the eyes sometimes, especially in a three quarter view. But if you learn to draw through your shapes, that doesn't affect you at all. And you end up with. Uh, profile eyes. So if you are drawing an eye from the side, you're only gonna be about seeing about about half of your eyeball. So you would have lines going from one side of the eye to the other. And then you would just close it off right there. Darken the top line. And you have profile eyes with your top eyelid, your bottom eyelid and curvature to it. Now. When it comes down to this very concept of the eyes. Let me hear your guys' questions on this because I know that I tend to simplify this a lot. And this is a very important aspect of the face. So this is probably somewhere where I would expect you guys to have some questions. So please let me know if you guys have questions, how to figure out different things about the eyes and let's figure it out.
I just, this is my biggest struggle on drawing his eyes and I just don't, I don't know like. How to like think of a question about it. I just like, um, like when it's in three quarter and stuff, um. Having the eyes be the same size, I struggle with that.
So if it helps out at all. If you think about your, both of your eyes just being connected, it's actually interesting and it's very uh. It's a, it's a different way of actually learning how to draw the eyes, but it's actually pretty consistent. So if you look at your eyes, they're gonna be two, two spheres, right? So if you think about making them into a cylinder. Where you have your eyes connected to each other. It's gonna be harder for you to draw them as different sizes that are off. Because you'll start seeing this, even if you're going into. Uh, perspective, you're going to see that the cylinder can't be too distorted if you want it to look like it's similar. And it makes it really easy. To draw even forced drawings in perspective a little bit easier. And when you learn to draw your eyelids over them and your nose bridge. You end up being able to draw. Your eyes in different perspectives relatively easy. Does that make sense a little bit? Does that help or is that just?
That does help. I've never thought of it that way.
Yeah, you can think about your eyebrows the same way. You can think about your eyebrows as one big worm and then just split it in the middle. Like you can think about having a big unibrow and then just split it in the middle and you'll always have consistent eyebrows too.
Wow, yeah.
So if you have issues drawing the same eye, the same like size eye, remember first of all that your face is gonna be divided into. The sections, right? As you get better, you're going to be seeing a lot more lines within those same spaces and you'll be able to narrow down. The spaces in which you give yourself an allowance to draw those features. So at first, we are dividing this into thirds, right? And that's how we are like kind of figuring it out. But eventually you'll be able to divide this into tenths, into sixteenths. It's going to get to the point where you get so used to drawing things in thirds that you're gonna start adding extra divisions inside of here to be able to narrow down little things like. Broken noses or extra eye details or big eyelashes and stuff like that. So the more that you practice drawing from this basic structure, you're going to get better at seeing more and more levels of detail. And eventually you'll start seeing kinda like I see things, which is a bunch of lines like this. And then I just kinda draw my shapes inside. I just sculpt my character based on those grids. Because I'm able to see that level of detail now. I'm, I'm no longer just seeing a little triangle in these lines. I'm seeing a ton more detail before I even lay down my pencil because I just have a lot more experience drawing them like that. But it just comes with time and it comes well with practicing the same uh. Like methods over and over and over and over and over until they. Become the team. Essentially, your fundamentals. And your fundamentals consists of the things that are supposed to be there. Even needing to actually access them. So it comes in your. Add me, place a big role in that. In order to be able to understand uh features a little bit easier. Another way that you guys can see eyes that are really easy is by following what I call a peak curve. So if you have any shape for your, right? Any shape for your. If you set a midline and you make the peak of your curve of your eye, this midline. You can just draw two dots on the side. Connect that at the highest peak. Then you give yourself a little bit of overlap so you can have. Your eye. So what happens if you shift that to let's say this side? So if we have our circle. And we shift this middle line a little bit to the side, if that becomes a peak. Then we get eyes that are looking slightly. In a different direction. And you can proceed to do that all the way down to the edge. But that's just another way that you guys can see it, another way that's simple to be able to like understand where the curvature goes in the eye. And like I said, in time, you will be able to just draw two dots. A curvy line, overlap a curvy line, and then just draw whatever details you want inside. And it's going to get to the point where you can draw all that really, really quickly and it's just going to be amazing for you. And it's gonna be a little bit less uh struggle in getting the, the look that you want from your characters. So now, any more questions about the ice or did that clarify what you wanted, Caitlin?
Yes, that did.
Yes, then, okay. Does anybody else have any questions about the eyes that they would like to be clarified?
Oh, it's pretty understanding.
You demonstrated doing uh. Like a female feminine eye with, you know, larger eyelashes coming out. Sometimes that gets a little tricky.
Let me show you how easy it is to draw that. When you draw your shape, you draw your eye, set you two points on your sphere. And if you wanna have like the little simple eyes, I normally instead of having your eyes be just. Flat like this, take one of these points, move them down and the other one up. And I just angle the curvature for those hemispheres that I draw. And you end up with those angled eyes that are normally very annoying to draw, right? But then on top of that, I'm just gonna darken this top line a little bit more and give it nice style. And as you see, the more that I add to this. The more it's gonna give me the look of like a very fancy makeup or something like that. And it just comes from darkening that top line to represent that makeup that women put on. So it's two curvy lines, it's two dots connected by a curvy line, but just angled up a little. With a bunch of extra frizzle at the edge. So that is how I would do. Corey, what's up, man?
Hey, can you, can you draw that? Can you draw a face like that just really quick? I know you can, but you just.
Absolutely. So if you wanna draw a face with like a cute little uh. Eyes like that. Normally for my pinups, I like to keep them at a one to one ratio. I like to keep my forehead and all the bottom part of my face as a one to one ratio. I just divide it in half. Keeps it nice and easy for me. I'm going to draw my triangle. I'm going to find my features by following those lines. And then I'm going to go into my eyeballs. My eyeballs are going to be two little barbells with a little triangle at the top. And then I'm going to choose one point here, one point angled up, connected with a curvy line. One angle here, one angle up, connected with a curvy line. I'm going to do another curvy line on the bottom that's a little bit thinner and I'm gonna overlap it a little bit and thicken those lines. To make it look like there's a bunch of like mascara or something. From there, I would draw my eyelashes or my eyebrows. And then I would go into my nose that fits within that little triangle space and then I would draw my lips. Now this is a slightly big head, so. Let's adjust it, change it to fit something a little bit more appealing. Brought some hair and you have ourselves. So nice. Would you like some more examples, Corey?
Uh, yes, please.
Yeah, can we see like with like a, like a different expression? Cause I know like it's like the sultry eyes but like. Like a surprise eye.
A surprise, you got it. So let's draw a face. A surprise face would mean that the eyebrows are up. So when that triangle comes in, we would draw our eyebrows up by just making a wider circle up. That means that our eyebrows would be pushed all the way up here. Have my nose and then a surprised uh face would probably be with our mouth open, right? So we'd be like, what? So by drawing the mouth open. I can give. An indication. Of surprise. Curvy line, curvy line. Slightly thinner curvy line in the middle and thicken it to give it the idea of like makeup. Your cheekbones would be high up and they would be stretched because your mouth is going down a little bit more. So you would have a longer face than normal. And then this would lead to your cheekbone, to your ear. And the upper lip. If you wanted an even bigger expression of fright, like if you wanted to go almost to the point of cartooniness. You can enhance that by bringing your eyes all the way up to the top of your shape. And really exaggerate that. Give it a little, like, eyes, just get them a little closer. So that we can create a more cartoony surprise effect. Does that, does that uh make sense? That answer your question? Is there any other facial expressions you guys want me to actually tackle so you guys can see what, how they're done?
Really mad, really mad face.
Really mad. So really mad is gonna be very similar to this one. And the shapes are going to be very angled in. This one has a lot of curvature, but it's going to follow very similar guidelines. Since angry eyes tend to bring your eyebrows in. You follow those same guidelines, but you gotta remember that your face is scrunching up. So you're bringing all your muscles in and essentially you're creating tension in the middle of your face whenever you're scrunching. Right? All your muscles are scrunching in this general path, like they're going in. So you have a lot of lines and a lot of compression in that middle section. And that is how you would generate a person being more angry. You scrunch up everything in order like crack.
You question, I do have a question. I do have a question with that. So like a lot of times when I'm trying to draw a angry expression, uh. He, well, I've, I've seen a lot of people draw it and you could still see the eyes in there, but it's like the eyebrows kinda cover up the eyes a lot of times.
Okay, let me tell you guys how your eyebrows work with your eyes. So your eyebrows and your eyes have a very interesting dynamic. So let's say that we have our very basic like shape right, right? This is our basic structure. So your eyebrow. Is actually on a big muscle on top of your eye socket. Right? So you have this big muscle structure that has your eyebrow on top of it. When this muscle comes down. It covers your eyeball. So you still have all those elements of your eyeball there. You have to learn to draw through them. The lighting. Man down, man down. Webcam is very finicky when it comes on to lighting. Okay, so we were like, so if your eyebrow, your big eyebrow muscle, right? If this big eyebrow muscle where your eyebrow sits, that's on top of that big circle that we draw. When it comes down, it covers a little bit of your eyeball. So it covers a little bit and it actually has a little bit of fleshy parts which generate a bunch of lines on the side. But the lines are literally just your hemispheres for your eyeball. So it's your upper eyelid and then the compression that happens from your muscle pushing down. So you have this big muscle. Pushing down onto your eye. Buring a little bit of it and creating shadows. From that overlap. So whenever you're drawing something weird. You gotta draw that muscle. Coming down and then you draw your eyeballs. Because they would be covered a little bit by that actual muscle. And that's also the muscles that create all those tension points that generate. Wrinkles and stuff like that. Does that make sense? Does that clarify it, Corey?
It does. Thank you, Sensei.
Alright, so. Let's see, let's talk a little bit about the nose now. And then we'll finish up with the chin and the mouth and then talk a little bit about how to connect everything to the actual body. Okay, so let's start going into the notes. So the beauty about drawing the concept like I'm showing you guys by starting with a triangle. Is that you already have the perfect mapping point for your nose. This alongside with a simple dot. This alongside with a simple dot. In connecting the lines can give you all the reference points you guys need. To be able to have a nice standard shape for your nose. All you need to do is draw a pyramid. And a pyramid is as easy to draw as a triangle. A dot and connecting all three lines. Now let's say that you wanted to draw a nose looking up. Well, I already drew that, but let's draw it with a dot looking up and it gives you a nose looking up. If you draw that dot looking down. And you connect all three lines, you're going to have a nice little reference point for your mouth looking down. Or your nose looking down. The nose is actually quite simple to draw when it comes down to uh characters most of the time. It gets really a little bit more complicated when you start adding things like uh wide nose bridges and stuff. But when it comes to being a little. With more advanced line work, you can start with your triangle. Chop off a little bit of it and that give you the one that you need for your nose. So you'll just learn how to adapt those same concepts to more difficult uh drawings later on. It just comes with uh understanding uh the basic structures first and then tackling on things that push those limits. Uh so that is essentially noses. And noses um. It's a profile, it's really easy, just draw a dot, connect them and then render it in the way that you want. Because a little pyramid gives you a very, a lot of very basic points. It gives you the nose. The angle for your nose bridge, it gives you. Like a top and the bottom. It gives you all these basic parts really, really quickly. So whenever you're drawing your triangles. Just remember that the width of that triangle is going to be the relative width of your nose. And it's going to keep you. Drawing your things a little bit more anatomically correct. And at the same time, making it incredibly simple to be able to understand where your nose goes. So does that make any sense? And does that come with any questions, guys?
No, pretty understandable.
Like, it, it might make sense to like say it in words, but while you guys are drawing this, it's just making sense? Is there anything that's uh complicated for you guys to visualize right now that you guys might uh understand, but still makes it a little bit harder for you to do?
Um, how about age affecting the nose and it drooping down?
So the nose in itself. So when you are little, your nose is gonna be nice and perky, right? So you have a triangle and this is roughly the shape that you would have for a nice perky nose. As you get older, this cartilage just starts melting. So I would just draw this falling down. Like I would just slowly make my nose melt. And then that is how you start drawing age. And you start enhancing things like the little like muscle lines outside of the face. And you start adding little things like wrinkles and cracks. And then that is how you start aging a nose. Uh just make it bigger. Like, features of the face, especially when it comes down to kids, if you're drawing a kid, the facial features tend to be really small. Except for the eyes, right? Everything else tends to be really compressed. And very miniscule, like the smaller the features, the more uh cute the character is. As you get older. You can start making those facial features really long. And it starts aging the character a little.
One of the tricks I was told about that was from Steven Silver. And he kind of made a comment about. Imagine like, again, your eye sockets are uh like golf balls and there is a rubber band. You know, attached in between them. And for little kids, they're gonna be either apart and that look, that rubber band.
Way to see it. So what he's saying is you have a rubber band in between. And the rubber band gets longer as you get older. Right?
Right. So yeah, when you're a little kid, you draw the eyes bigger, you know, the eyes are bigger, they're a little, usually, you know, depicted a little bit further apart. So the rubber bands taut closer up to, towards the eyes. But then as you get older, the eyes are, you know, smaller, a little closer together, the nose droops down lower.
That's an interesting way of seeing it. Uh, yeah, it's actually quite fun, but actually nice way of uh seeing it. Uh, you guys wanna see something really cool, like a little uh trick? I, I did this for twenty one draw. And essentially it teaches you how to age a character relatively. So a character will be pretty similar from the eyes up. Right? If you have a character that has. Eyes, eyebrows, and let's say the top of the ear. This is going to stay relatively the same. If you wanna make a character look young, make the jaw really small. If you wanna make a character look older, start stretching that out and see how stretching it out. Makes the character look older and older and older every time. So as you start getting. Older, you start seeing more sagging in your actual features. And that triangle gives you these lines, so you don't have to worry about that later on. That triangle is gonna give you that sagging line or just that muscle group. So you can draw a person aging or a person that's young, really, really easy with that little triangle method. So that is very convenient that we are able to map out that body feature so quickly. Okay, so if you guys are okay with it and you guys don't have any more questions about the nose, please, if you do, please let me know. Uh, so that I can actually uh. Answer this. Yo, I'm teaching a class, I'll call you back in a second. Okay. So, okay, any other questions, guys? They uh, when it comes down to the nose. Before we move on to the mouth, which is really, really easy as well, you guys will be like able to draw mouths just as easy as you draw eyes now. Because it's a very similar shape, but if you guys have any more questions about the actual nose aspect of the face. Please let it be known now before we move on to the next part.
Um, okay, so one question I do have is the nostrils. Uh, for instance, like a person that's like taking deep breaths. Uh, the nostrils were expand, would the uh shading of the uh nose expand as well?
Okay, so whenever you are actually like breathing in, what you're doing is you're moving your nose. Uh, you're moving your cheeks up. Actually, um, try doing it right now. Try like making your nose. Like you're breathing in really hard and you'll see that it's your cheekbones moving everything up. It's not necessarily your nose moving, it's your cheekbones moving everything around it up, creating that tension on your nose that pulls it up. But in order to just recreate that and make something go from like a normal nose to a nose that's breathing it in. All you have to do is enhance. The perspective and the actual um. The gap that you see here. Right? Like you have to move that shape up. And then open the actual airway so that it looks like the character is taking a deep breath and. Uh, actually, how would it be? Anyways, uh, let's see. Uh, nostrils though, the actual nostrils of the nose. You have your triangle, you set your guidelines. So this is going to be a base part of your nose. You need to understand that you have three sections, you know, actually four. You have the ball of your nose, it's gonna be at the top of your nose. Then you're gonna have two little elements on the side of it. Let's draw it from the front view, so you guys see it better. You're gonna have the ball of the nose and you're gonna have two nostrils on the side. They're normally a little bit more round than they are flat. But just keeping in mind that you have these three sections. After you draw your triangle and you decide the width of your nose, all you gotta do is. Indicate that width on the edges of your triangle, because you already drew the width of them. You just need to define them. To give them the ultimate shape that you want for your nose. Uh, if you can make these big, you can make those small, you can make them insignificant, you can just make them disappear if you want to, if you don't wanna draw them. Right? You don't have to draw the noses the way that other people do either. As long as you draw a shape that goes back and connects to that area, you can get away with drawing pretty much any shape as a nose. And that is a very convenient thing when it comes down to learning. Uh, but when it comes down to actually uh refining your skills, you should aim to do a more standard, realistic way. Or just mapping system so that you have a base standard that you can use to create your cartoons and caricatures and portraits and stuff like that. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question or was that like complete rubbish and like I just centered it to completely?
Actually did. You basically taught me the entire anatomy of a nose right now.
Oh, okay, perfect. And it's, yeah, once you have that little triangle and you base it off that diamond or that pyramid. You'll start seeing that just the edges of the triangle or the pyramid that you create are going to give you those. Really, really quickly. So you won't really have to think too much about like how you draw them, you just have to make sure that you draw them at the edges. And it's gonna be a little bit more accurate than if you just drew balls or whatever. Even just a little tiny line like that can be enough indication of that nostril. So a lot of the times, especially with pinups, like you're going to want to. Reduce the amount of detail that you draw on the nose. So a lot of the times, people draw noses like this, right? This way. They draw little tiny noses that are barely there or that have very little tiny detail. AKA Scott Campbell, Chris Sanders, pretty much anybody that draws anything with pinups tends to do this sort of trick. Making the nose really little tiny and like with no detail to the nose bridge. And that makes the characters look a little bit more uh like pinup. So let me find a couple of examples so you guys see what it means. So. You know, like I barely draw any noses and they end up looking nice and cute. Let's see if we can find any more. Some slightly more. Yeah, I found, I figured that this time around, we didn't really focus much on finished detailed artwork. We just focused on. Ton of uh lessons. So yeah, even when I'm drawing the simple gestures, I tend to eliminate the nose completely most of the time on my panels because it'll be, uh, doesn't need to be uh there, but it doesn't have to be necessarily very detailed. So that is what I, how I attack that feature when it comes on to drawing more like pinupy crap. As you guys can see, I barely, very, very, very rarely decide to add any details when it comes down to the nose. And here's a bunch of examples. Like you can see that it's just a shadow and two little dines. And then the moment that I add a little bit more line work to the nose, it ends up looking a little bit more bulbous, a little bit more goofy. So. I can stick to drawing minimal detail for the nose. I hate these terrible pages. Alright, so before we move on to the mouth, is there any other questions when it comes down to a nose? Any others? Are we good? Did everything freeze?
Yeah.
Oh, I know. I didn't see on the first move, so I was like, oh wow, this freeze. Alright, so we good? Yep. Alright, so let's move on to the actual mouth aspect of uh face. And I think we are going to need to go on to another page. So the actual mouth area. Is going to consist of that little teardrop that comes out of that triangle in the first place. So we're gonna draw a face shape, we're gonna draw a midline, we're gonna draw a triangle and we're gonna draw a teardrop based on the lines of that triangle. This is going to give us the spacing for our cheek muscle. So this is going to be the cheek muscle, which we can use to draw people that are old later on, like we just uh practiced. So those muscles are going to be the ones that like create a sagging skin and stuff. Right? It's gonna help you understand that aspect and this is going to overlap normally where the chin goes. You have your eyes. Bones, in this case, skin is set. And that is roughly how you attack. Anyways, uh, let's move this a little closer. Okay, so let's talk about this mouth area. This mouth area right here that you create, this little teardrop, gives you a lot of information. And is going to be quite um useful to separate this section from the rest of your face. Most of the rest of your face doesn't really move. So I, this is very immobile. Besides from your eyebrows moving up and down. This area of your face is pretty static, so you don't really move this aspect of your mouth, of your face. This, however, this area is very mobile. If the mouth opens, it can go from being something simple like this to being a shape that is completely different. Because the mouth has the ability to unhinge and open up and change positions. So that's why I tend to keep this little section into its own little world. Right? So when I'm drawing that little section. I tend to approach it like this. I draw my triangle, I draw my nose first by drawing my dots, let's draw a dot down, connect all three points. Decide on the style for my nose. And then it leaves me with this space of map. So my nose is gonna cover part of it. And it's gonna leave me with all this space to play with. This space, I can very easily just choose two points. Anywhere along those lines and connect them with a curvy line. Just very similar to what we did with our eyes, overlap the top line and create negative space and you have mouths. It is actually that easy and you can change those lines to be. Doing any facial expression within that space and it's gonna look correct. It's gonna look like it fits there and it's gonna look like it actually is supposed to work with that facial feature. If you wanna enhance it and you wanna move out of here, let's say that you wanted to do like a Joker smile. Right? Let's say you wanted to like create a character that's kinda like the Joker. Well, the Joker character has their mouth and it's like all the way up there. So how does that fit within this rule? Well, the thing is, when it comes down to super exaggerated things like that, you need to modify your shape. To fit the spacing that your mouth is gonna be. So instead of, you always connect it back to the bottom parts of your nose canal. But you're going to just have to modify that cheekbone shape. Because now it has to curve around the mouth that is extensively larger. So in order to make that same rule work. You need to adjust it to be able. To. Fit within. It is, to understand the very basics of it. See how it still fits within the triangle? It's still fit, touching the edges of it. And it goes from there in those directions. That is the key component here, understanding that little ask. Is the most important aspect. Uh, make it look really, really nice. So any questions so far on the little area mapping space? So once you understand how to draw that section. Well, now you can play around with different shapes. To create different facial expressions.
Uh, so going back to the uh Joker expression, uh, I was wondering how would the expression be if it was, instead of being dragged upwards? It's more like uh the jaw, jaw dropping, basically.
Like a sad clown? Or like a jaw open?
Yeah, something like that. Jaw open and sad clown too.
So if you're opening your jaw, I'm gonna draw it in three quarters so that you guys see how your jaw actually works. So if you're drawing your jaw open, normally your face would be contained within this spacing, right? So if you have this as your standard, you gotta understand that your jaw rotates around your actual ears. If you find your ear, then and you find your chin, all you gotta do to open your mouth is take this and just find the angle in which your jaw would change. And you can start drawing your mouth opening properly, but you gotta get that hinge actually right. Your actual jaw hinges at an angle. So if you don't get that angle right, it's really hard, but once you do, all you gotta do is connect again the bottom of your triangle to that and then create the facial expression you want. So let me clean that up for you guys, so you guys see what that means. So, if we have our facial expression. Right? We have our ear. Other way. Have our ear. If our mouth is closed at this point, it's going to stay right here. This jaw doesn't really move. The moment that my mouth opens a little bit, this amount that it moved open, I need to move it down. But it doesn't just move completely down, it follows the curvature that you followed for your initial division. So when you draw that initial circle inside of your shape to get that middle line, it follows the curvature of that circle. And as you open it more, you can just connect the bottom of your triangle, creating that teardrop. Even if you do open it infinitely, you can open it all the way back by create like some venom looking thing. Right? So you can move it all the way back, as long as you always connect that shape, you're going to have the spacing there to create the proper anatomy. So you can exaggerate it all you want. But as long as you know where it connects back to, it's going to actually look okay.
As long as it's like still connected to like the triangle of the nose, you can get like any shape of the mouth, basically.
Exactly. You will come to understand as we do these lessons and I share them with you guys. You will come to understand that understanding where something connects is much more valuable and infinitely more valuable than knowing how to actually draw that body part. So me understanding where my nose comes from and how it works allows me to not have to draw a realistic nose. I just know that my nose has to connect to all three points. So as long as I draw something that connects all three points to that, I can draw round noses, I can draw triangles, I can draw pyramids, I can draw any shape I want. As long as it's touching and the connecting points. And I like to explain this in a different way. I like to explain this like a balloon going through a hole in a piece of wood. So imagine that you have your nose canal, the triangle is a piece of wood. Imagine that is a plank of wood. And there's a balloon underneath that you're going to start putting. The balloon is going to be limited because it has to be able to come in from that hole. Right? It has to fit within that space. It can't magically cover other places. It can't just break through other parts of the board. This is the space that is allowed for your nose volume, anything that you wanna draw for your nose. We are using pyramids instead of a balloon, but it's the same concept. If you have a nose and you have a gap for your cartilage, you can draw your nose as big as you want. But it has to always connect back to that space. So if you have a nose, you don't have to draw a really tiny nose. You can draw a gigantic nose. But it always has to fit back to that spacing, so that it actually looks like it fit within that structure. So you can oversize them, you can make them as big as you want, as little as you want, as long as it fits back into that one little gap. You can draw your shapes in any way you want. It's actually quite fun to play around with different shapes and just see what comes up from just figuring out different cool, different ways to drawing things. So does that clarify that?
Yeah, it's pretty amazing how you simplified it basically.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, and then once you learn that one part, like once you learn that little triangle mapping, then everything else just starts falling into places like a puzzle piece like, ah, like Sudoku. As long as you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in each line, it's going to fall into place. Right? So as long as you have that triangle and that triangle connects to your eyebrows, then I can find my cheekbone and my temples. If I follow this one down, I can find my, dress my cheekbones, and then I can start drawing into my jaw. And every little part just connects something else to it. And eventually you end up with a nice little system that you can use as a standard base for your drawings. And then from that standard, you can modify this in any way you need to, to create all the really cool stylized things that you guys really want. Right? You take your standard and you apply your imagination to it to come up with more awesome things. And the more that you play around with your foundational sams, which are just simple anatomy mannequins, you end up with the ability to modify those and you end up with a ton of different ways to use them. It's uh, it's quite an interesting little uh approach to, to visualizing things. And I have enjoyed it so far. Alright, so that takes care of the placement of the mouth, but now let's draw. Anything, anything else besides the placement? We're gonna go into the shape of mouth in a second, but is there anything else that comes to placement? Are you guys getting the placement of actual features down? Uh or is that still a question of uh some confusion?
No, I pretty much understand it.
Cool. Awesome. So if you guys wanna refine these pieces of knowledge anyways, like if you guys wanna actually play around and practice this, I would recommend you guys do a couple pages of things until they click and do them by parts. So try to like take and, and one page and just draw everything in every single drawing. Try to focus on each individual part that we focused on for each page that you draw. And then you'll help cement that information into your brain a little bit easier. And, and on top of that, if you guys take the time to create something that you feel like you're proud of, with every single new piece of information that you guys find clicks, then you guys will always just have a much stronger sense of uh, of learning. Because every time that you guys create something new, that's really cool that you guys are proud of, you guys are putting all that stuff into your mental library. And then you can recall that from memory. So every, that's how you are able to draw from memory a lot easier. By drawing a shit ton and then just uh using that knowledge. Alright, so let's go down onto the shape of the mouth. And let's talk a little bit about how we can play around with that and create things like lips and mouths and teeth and how to figure out the check. So, we already have this little teardrop shape on our face, right? And that is going to give us our nose, is gonna give us the spacing for our mouth. So the mouth and the eyes are actually quite similar, incredibly similar. In the fact that you just have to draw a curvy line and a slightly overlapped upper line to your bottom line. If you do that and you add negative space instead of adding your actual eye, you end up with mouths. So adding a little bit of a line underneath gives you your lower lip. But let me show you how easy it is to draw big, nice, sultry lips by using this technique as well. We're gonna draw midline, let's draw a little nose. And in order to draw big, pouty lips, all you gotta do is again, draw your little teardrops, figure out the limits of your mouth. Then you're going to draw two dots. You're gonna curve one up a lot. And you're gonna curve the other one down a lot. But you're gonna tuck it in so that the top line overlaps. Now, you're going to draw the lips inside of this, but from this point, you're not gonna draw them outside, you're gonna draw them inside. And you end up with nice, solid lips. Curvy line. Slightly less thick curvy line, and then from this point, I draw the inside of my lips. And just like that, you have nice sultry lips that you guys can use for any of your little drawing. And this works in every perspective. So if you want, it's very easy. If you wanna draw lips, just add more volume so you have space for the actual lip. And if you want that little B, just cut it out. Now, this is normally something that a lot of people struggle with. Uh so you can also visualize it like this. Draw your upper shape for your mouth, then just draw the upper lip first. Right? And then layer the bottom lip tucked in inside of that. That's another way to visualize. Another way to see it is a rubber band. If you see your mouth like rubber bands with two points, you can just create cute little mouths by creating rubber bands overlapping over the two points and then creating negative space. Dot, dot. And then you can also do the lips thing with that one too. The trickier is to learn this little tiny overlap in understanding that your upper lip is normally above your bottom lip, overlapping a little bit. If you remember that, it becomes a lot easier to draw mouths as a simple shape.
That, the overlap is what got me right there. That, that got, that's it. That's what I needed to hear.
Thank you. Any overlap, you overlap the top line like you do with your eyes. Right? You overlap that top line, but you just add negative space and you have mouths instead of eyes. So let's draw a couple eyes and a couple lips in the same shapes. So dot, dot, curvy line, curvy line. Darken the top line, overlap it a little bit. And then this one, do we want it to be eyes or do you want it to be a mouth? You guys choose.
Mouth.
Mouth. Cool. Let's take that same exact shape. Let's curve it a little bit so you guys see what happens when you wanna create different facial expressions. Quite easy. So all you gotta do is cut to your top line, overlap it a little bit. A little bit less thick of a bottom line, and then add your detail in the form of lips or in the form of actual na teeth and stuff like that. From a profile view, you would do the same thing. Take that little teardrop that we find whenever we're drawing, go to the edge. And then just go around to the other side. So when you're drawing profiles, let me explain that a little bit easier. So when you're drawing a profile, right, for drawing a mouth, we're essentially drawing a point from one point of a cylinder to the other point of a cylinder on the other side. So this little roundness needs to be accounted for, and that is easy to do when you have a little teardrop. Because the little teardrop gives you the limitations of your mouth even in a three-quarter view. So you go from here, just go one point here, find the other side, and then just connect those like a rubber band. Create your negative space and you have a mouth. So now let's uh open it up questions for this section. Do you guys have any questions when it comes down to this? And if you guys need any examples to make it a little bit clearer.
So when, basically when drawing the lips, when you said drawing like on the inside about that little overlap, so when you mean by that, it's drawing a little bit more upwards by a little bit, it's almost angled, right?
Here, let me explain it a little bit simpler. Uh your mouth in itself is more like a ribbon than anything else. So if you think about your lips, they're kinda like this. The part that you see is kinda like if you had a ribbon that was bending around. Right? They tuck into the side of your mouth at an angle, and then it curves up to show a little bit of it, and then it curves back down to the side of your mouth. So, but the thing is, the top and the bottom of your lips in that same place, from that from these places, that same point, but it's underneath. So you see this curvature underneath that you don't see that goes back to that. So, your bottom lip is also coming from this place. But it's normally tucked in underneath the bottom, the top lip, creating that shape, which is simplified by creating a line to two dots overlapping the top line and just dragging your upper lip from those points. And that is how you get that replication of that complicated shape. Over here, your upper lip is always mostly, actually kinda always going to overlap over your bottom lip. It's just going to be the case most of the time. I don't think it's possible to do that the other way. Uh I guess that if you have it the other way, it'd be like super pouty lips, like super pouty lips like. You know, like that would be like someone is like having an allergic reaction to something lips. Like someone punched you in the face lips.
Okay, I get it. I get it. Yeah, I get it now. Cause I always thought like it's almost more like it was, at that, in my perspective, that was more like in an angled, in an angled direction.
Like this, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So you can use a mouth like that, just remember that this upper line is gonna overlap the bottom line. And you can use that shape if that's something that you're comfortable with. You can figure out the lips using those measurements. Just remember that the upper shape is always going to overlap the bottom shape.
Okay, I get it now.
Cool. Alright, open to questions, anything else from this section? And then we'll, if not, we'll move on to uh some little details about drawing the teeth, so you guys don't like draw teeth wrong, and we'll move on to the chin. And then we'll move on to the last part, which will be like the connection with the neck. And I think we're uh pretty close to running on time, but, but we started a little late because of technical issues, so I don't mind going out a little bit. So, any questions when it comes down to the mouth at this stage? Are we good? Yeah?
I'm good.
Okay, good, good, good. Sorry, I don't see you guys. Okay, good, 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 sorry, I don't see you guys. This camera is. Which is. So I do need you guys to have a confirmation so that I know that I'm not being anybody.
You're doing great, yeah.
Let's move on to the chin, so you guys understand how to draw difficult poses from like the bottom and the top and stuff like that. So this little triangle is very convenient because of very interesting angles, like the ones. That involve looking up really heavily. This. Mapping system allows you to just follow those guidelines until you get to the edge of your actual shape. And it gives you a bunch of knowledge. Really, really quickly. Using your pyramid to find your nose, you can come up with your shapes a lot easier. For the harder. Wow poses and perspective and stuff, just mostly because that triangle gives you a lot of guidelines. That are very hard to find when it comes down to like using like the Loomis method, like this, this right here was so hard for me to draw. Where the Loomis method, like I just drawing from a sphere was awkward, it's like super complicated for some reason, so when I started drawing from a cylinder. Drawing heads looking up just meant I needed to bend that noodle a little bit. And it just made drawing heads from the side a little bit easier for some reason, like just drawing them with. The triangle method and also understanding. That my cylinder shape is a stronger shape for me. Made it infinitely easier to draw faces and cooler poses without having to guess where everything was. Uh, so drawing heads from the top, drawing heads from the bottom become really easy. When you just map it out like this, because it just gives you all your mapping points really quickly. So that is another thing that you guys can consider. Uh, the chin is actually relatively easy, it's at the bottom of this actual teardrop shape, just have to draw some sort of shape. For volume, this can be double chance, this could be single chance, this could be anything you want. It just has to have some volume underneath the mouth and you guys will. Have an extra level of detail that you guys can add to your characters. Cool, so that's actually relatively simple thing that you guys can add to any character if you guys feel like you need to add a little bit more character to them. Um, if you want to connect your neck. Or your head to an actual body, uh, how about we talk a little bit about the actual like proportions that would be considered normal? And then we call it a night because that would be entirety of the face. So. So. The actual head to rib cage ratio is kinda like this. If you have your rib cage. Your head is going to be. A little bit thinner. Than the outside of your rib cage. Now, your rib cage is not the width of your body, your actual arms. Extend a little bit past your rib cage and they tend to come down. This is where it gets really simple for the actual proportions of the head. As long as you draw something like an eyeball. On top, shooting a laser beam up, I like to describe it like that because that's just the easiest funniest way for me to actually think of it. This gives me my cylinder, which allows me to draw. My head. And this gives you proportions that are equivalent to a normal standard human being. So your rib page will always indicate how wide your head has to be. Now you can change that size and you can change that later on when you find out uh how to draw this proportionally all the time. When you understand the concept of it. You can always modify it later, right? You can always change everything about these uh little measurements and stuff like that down the line. But until you get good at understanding how to map out those systems. Uh, stay with a standard approach to it and then slowly. Adapt to be more of what you want. And then that really small adaptation will become your style. That will become how you develop this very basic stuff. But in your way, that makes you feel more comfortable, that makes it more appealing to you. And then that's pretty much it, that little cylinder is going to connect to your ears, so. Whatever eyeball you draw shooting up. That is going to connect to your ears, and then you just add the volume for your head. On top of that, and that is how you proportion your rib cage to your actual body, to your head, a little bit easier. Does that make sense? So let me show you guys some examples. So we talked about this a little bit earlier in the week. You can move your head around by just simply connecting the cylinder to that little eye thing and then just moving it around. And little by little, you guys will be able to draw really cool things, a kind of like comics and. Every single pose possible later on when you guys learn the concepts behind these, learning to draw through your shapes stuff. But it just becomes really easy to be able to draw characters when you understand things. To a deeper level that keeps you from guessing where things are supposed to go. Anyways, guys, uh, if you guys have any questions at the end right now, please let me know if you need any more clarification of anything. I'll be more than happy to stay here until it makes sense to you guys, like I said, you guys are paying for this, so you guys are going to get your worth. You guys are going to be, I'd be more than happy to stay here with you guys until you guys actually grasp every concept that you guys wish to have learned today. So when it comes down to the actual facial features, is there anything that you guys still have questions about? And if you guys do, please let me know, like, uh, don't be shy, this is why you guys are paying for this, so. Uh, on the Brits, what's up?
Okay, so I had a question about. The triangle and everything, because when you draw your characters sometimes. Making this a little bit bigger so that you can see, you. Close their eyes, but then you do this little thing right here. Why do you do that?
So what I'm drawing there. It's just age lines, there it's like a detail that I know you like to add. To give depth to my drawing, so if I draw just a flat lines like this, it doesn't really have an indication of depth. But the moment that I add this line and this line, it starts giving you an idea of the. The muscle or the indentation of the eyeball, and if I add lines up here. Then it starts giving you an indication of eyeball on top or my eyelid. So little tiny lines that I draw, they all have a purpose. This gives me a little bit of depth between my nose, giving me a little bit of negative space. And if I wanted to, I could keep adding little tiny lines to indicate depth through my drawing. They might not be very prevalent and they might not stand out too much, but in the overall sense of things, they're giving you an idea of depth within my drawing. That you wouldn't have unless I added that little tiny dash. Plus, I'm old as hell, I'm like forty something and I'm feeling like I'm ninety, so I tend to add a lot of age marks to my drawings quite a bit.
The only reason why I was asking is because I was feeling my eye like we had done the other night when we had talked. And I feel a bone right there.
Oh, well, that's your eye socket.
So is that the same thing?
Yeah, that is an indication of where your eyeball is and then your eye socket. So if I wanted to draw a character with like recessed eyeballs, like, like if they're sick or something. I would start drawing more of the indication of the actual recession of the eyeball into the eye socket. And the more that you start receding it. The more it starts looking like creepy and stuff.
Thank you for clarifying that, that really helped out a whole bunch.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else, I'm actually gonna go down the list, so Sergio, any questions that you might have before we uh call it a night? Don't be shy, don't worry about like if it takes a while for us to understand or explain something else.
So, so the positioning of like the placement of the entire head right to the torso. Uh, for let's say instance females, would wouldn't it be just a neck, just a smaller, a little bit smaller?
Actually, yeah, no, you actually make your shoulders a lot smaller, so you don't make your neck necessarily smaller, let me show you. So if we have two body types and we have that same little circle going up onto our head. One of them will be male, one of them will be a female, so I'm gonna draw very similar heads. So the only difference between these body types is going to be the difference on our actual upper body. So with women, you're going to draw slightly less wide shoulders, you're going to. Want a slightly less wide body and you're gonna taper the living hell out of that neck to make it look thinner. You don't. Adjust your mapping points, you just adjust the space in between them. So you're still connecting your ear to that circle, but you're tapering it, so you get a slender look. With a man, you don't do that. And you make your shoulders a little bit wider, so it gives you a more. Wide look to your design. And then when you add your hips into it, you have white hips for women and you have narrow hips for men, so it gives you that. Differentiation without really changing. The actual shape of your body or your head, you're just changing how it connects in between. And the difference in sizes for your shoulders. And obviously boobs. Alright.
That makes way, way more sense, cause how I've been drawing like the, the. Female body and the male body is that I've been just adjusting the, the neck all along, but no, you have to adjust the uh shoulders. So for that, that's weakening.
Uh, nice.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions though?
Nope. Uh, but if I do have any more questions, I'll just.
If you guys have any questions about tonight's uh thing, or you guys wanna revisit anything with me uh at some point this coming week? Let me know, I'll be more than happy to revise it or like make little videos or even like during our TikTok lives, I can answer the questions you guys might have. So make sure to just ask me stuff so I can answer it if you guys do come up with more questions down the line. Uh, Kayla, your turn, anything that you would like clarified?
Um, can I just see like a little bit more of like the nose with the pyramid like three quarters?
Absolutely, so if we're going to be drawing the nose as a pyramid. That little triangle that we initially drew on our midline is going to be the base of our nose. And it's going to be the top of our actual nose bridge, that top of our nose bridge right there is going to lead us to where our eyes goes. Right, and I know that you mentioned that you had a problem drawing the eyes the same size, you just keep it like a little cylinder. So that you have a nice measurement of where both eyeballs are supposed to go, okay? And then with the nose, it's this triangle and then you draw a dot wherever you want your nose to be, so if you want it to be a really. Average nose, I would draw a dot relatively close to the bottom, connect all three points. And then stylize it in the fashion of your choice. Right, add a little bit of a nostril on the side. And then give it a little bit of a round section, so you have a baldy nose. And that is an effective way of doing it, but let me show you how. That adjusts when you draw them in three quarters and stuff. You can move the nose dot up and have your noses pointing up. If you have like noses that just point up, you can do that. If you have your noses looking down, you can just connect all three dots to it and then draw your nose looking down.
You shift your paper over.
Like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, and then when it comes down to drawing from like a front view, or I, this is still kinda profiling, right? So let's draw from a three quarter. That. Connect all three points to create my perspective, and then from there, let's make a little curvy. And that's how you would approach. That part. Is what is uh, what's hanging you up on that, if you don't mind me asking?
Oh, I think that like when you were doing it, maybe it was like lagging a little bit or like, so I couldn't see like about the. The three dots thing, so I, I think that's why I was like confused.
Make a pyramid by making a. Kinda go more extensively, you can divide this one part in half. And then have your spacing for your actual nostrils in between those. So you can later on start dividing this a little bit more into little sections, the more that you get comfortable drawing different noses. And when you find one standard nose that you get really good at drawing, let's say it's this one, I guess because it's a pyramid. Once you get good at that, you can start playing around and seeing how you can modify that, just to get different looks from it. And just playing around little by little and figuring out what works and what doesn't for you. That is how you develop the ability to draw absolutely every nose from memory. Because it's not like they're very different structure wise, there's probably like maybe like six or seven types of noses. And then, you know, everything else is just a slight variation of that.
Right, okay, yeah, that makes a lot more sense, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I don't think so.
Alright, uh, Robert Delaney. Any questions about the entire process that you might have any? Um, need to be reassured?
Uh, no, I think you kinda went over it, that the one question I did have, that was kinda. About going over the head and maybe it's out of the scope of what you wanted to cover tonight, but.
What is doing? Doing what?
Doing hair.
Hair, okay, so I'll explain it really quickly because hair's not actually really complicated. You understand, we understand the whole concept of the balloon going through the board, right? Like how there's a limited space in which your actual nose can come from. Right, well, the actual concept applies to hair as well, your hair doesn't grow from your forehead. It doesn't grow from your ears, it grows from your hairline, so once you learn to determine where your hairline is. And you can do that by drawing a circle through your shape. To determine the top section of your head. Then all you gotta do is think of the top of your head or the hair like as if it was plants. Imagine that you're like, the top of this is like a potted plant. Right, and then you have hair like grass, you can have hair that's like blades of grass that can move by the wind. Then you can have longer hair that goes up and then down like vines. Okay, and then when you wanna add volume, you just take those shapes. And you add width to them, so that you have a vine and with. If parallel it and then now you. So if you think about the upper part of your head, like. Like foliage. And it always goes back to that potted plant or going around that potted plant, it just becomes really easy to think about your hair. Because your hair always goes up, it grows and then it falls down due to gravity, and that's how you get those uh. Pieces of hair that curve around. Because that's short hair grows like stubble, it's like little, the grass. But as it gets longer, gravity starts taking over and eventually it starts falling directly down because of the weight. But it always starts from this upper section that is your hairline. And it grows up and then it falls down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that uh. It's a good way of looking at it, I like that.
And then I'll, I'll help you out a little bit more by doing it, people have been asking about that, so I'll make one of the next lives that I make. I'll just make it about hair and understanding this part of the body, so you guys can. Because it seems like a bunch of people are asking about that, so I'll make sure to make it into a little video for you guys soon. Alright, thank you, Mr. Robert, Mr. Robert Wimbish, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not at this time, I'm just enjoying watching and, and learning.
Oh, awesome, thank you so much, uh, Corey, any? Oh, awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, Corey, any questions from you, brother?
Uh, I don't have no questions. I just wanna, I'm sure I pretty much speak for everybody. Thank you so much for your, for your time. I've learned more than, you know, in this, in this time that we've done, then, then I've learned in a, in a while. I mean, you always teach me something new. So I just appreciate you. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, man. Well, thank you guys so much. Uh, thanks to this uh thanks to this meeting and uh your guys' like fee that you guys are paying, I'm able to actually purchase a webcam that I've been needing very desperately. So I appreciate you guys, every single thing that you guys send me is always going to be used for equipment. So it's always just nice to have people that are supportive like you and would, anytime you guys are wanting to do one of these again, and you guys have any topic that you guys want to join in, you guys will get priority for being one of the first people in here. And then I'll test out to see like how it is adding a little bit more people or if we need less people. And if you guys can give me any feedback, anything will do it. Like the sound was bad, if the video was cutting out, anything will help me and I won't take it as like a personal offense or anything. So please, anything that helps me make these better for you guys, it'll make it better for everybody. So honestly, just be honest with me at some point. If you guys can send me a message, that'd be fantastic. If everything was clear and it worked, that'd be nice to hear as well. But overall, thank you guys so much for being part of my class today. This is the second time that I do this. So I appreciate these little private lessons. I, I feel a little bit more happy because I get to see feedback from you guys right away. And uh, if you guys can do me a favor and just uh make a little story where you guys uh like say something nice about what we did today. So we can get more people interested in them. That'd be amazing. But other than that, that's all I have for you guys tonight. Uh, I do appreciate every single one of you guys. Thank you so much. I won't keep you any longer. Go off with your evening. I know some of you guys are incredibly uh late in the night because we started this really late. So also if a earlier time is better for you guys, let me know because we're all adults and we have work the next day and shit. So keep that, I'll keep that in mind as well to be more mindful for you guys. Uh, thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Uh, I will upload this to YouTube. So you guys have this as a reference point. So you guys can go back to it. And um, yeah, thank you. I appreciate all of you and I'll catch you guys in the next video.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Later, guys. So much, Rodan. Take it easy, Sensei.